The Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID-19 on March 4th, 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct essential business and is permitted under Government Code Section 54953 in order to protect public health and safety of attendees. Consistent with Government Code Section 54953, this planning commission meeting will be held via teleconference only, and there will be no physical location open to the public. Planning commissioners and staff will teleconference into the meeting by audio and/or video. The public can observe the meeting remotely via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via Cable Channel 26 or live stream broadcasts as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raised hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or tablet, or else enter *9 to raise your hand if dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff may properly identify you when it is your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number, as shown in the Zoom. Can we have a roll? Please.
Chair Verman.
Here.
Commissioner Domrath.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Godwin.
Here.
Commissioner Liel.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
And for the salute to the flag, Commissioner Ferguson, can you lead us in the salute to the flag?
Happy to.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic of America.
For which it stands.
One nation under God. indivisible, infinite, just for all.
Thank you. All right, before we move on to administrative business, I will ask if there's any public comments on the administrative business that we have before us tonight.
There are no hands raised, Chair Verman.
All right, thank you. I'll close the public comment period for that. And on to approval of the Order of Agenda. Does anyone have a motion to approve the Order of Agenda as presented? Commissioner Ferguson?
Unless anybody has any issue, I move to approve your agenda as presented.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Godwin. Commissioner Godwin, you're on mute.
I second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Verman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domrath.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yep.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Liel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Great. All right, and approval of minutes, it looks like we have no meeting minutes. Designation of liaison to city council meeting, there is none. And now on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Are there any public comments? Or oral communications, rather.
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you. I'll close the oral communications portion. And there are no consent items tonight. And. And now on to continued public hearings. So the first continued public hearing we have tonight is file number 2022-015 Coastal Development Permit CDP 440-22 for erection of one variable message sign and associated improvements within State Route 1 right-of-way as part of Caltrans State Route 1 traffic operations. Caltrans has proposed an alternative location. The proposed location is east of State Route 1 roadway and immediately west of Assessor Parcel Number 018-140-700. The alternative location is east of the State Route 1 roadway and immediately northwest of the Pacifica Police Department at 2075 Coast Highway, Assessor Parcel Number 018-051-050 in Pacifica. The recommended CEQA action is consider the State Route 1 Traffic Operational Systems Improvements Project at post miles 04 SM-1-26-43, or 26.43 to 47.20. And the initial study of negative declaration, SCH number 2020080229, prepared by Caltrans District 4, recommended action is approved as conditioned. Sorry, lots of numbers. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, and good evening. I'm going to share my screen. All right. All right, good evening, planning commissioners. I am Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The California Department of Transportation, or Caltrans, has proposed to implement the State Route 1 Traffic Operations System Improvement Project to improve traffic operations and public safety system performance, and to minimize the duration and impacts of non-recurring congestion due to incidents in roadway and tunnel closures along State Route 1 in San Mateo County. The overall project includes various improvements at 10 locations along State Route 1 between Half Moon Bay and Daly City in San Mateo County. The Caltrans State Route 1 Traffic Operations System Improvement Project includes two proposed locations along State Route 1 in Pacifica. During the June 20th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission considered the proposed development at the two locations within Pacifica and approved location 9-1 at the northeastern corner of the State Route 1 intersection with Rena Del Mar Avenue to install a wireless detection system module on an existing traffic signal. The Planning Commission continued the hearing on the proposed development at proposed location 9-2, which includes the placement of a variable message sign, or VMS, and associated improvements along the east side of State Route 1 between Fassler Avenue and Rena Del Mar. A variable message sign are electronic traffic signs that are used to provide motorists with real-time traffic safety and guidance information about traffic congestion and emergencies. The variable message sign would be off most of the time and would be programmed to be lighted only when needed. The Planning Commission expressed concerns that the development at the proposed site for location 9-2 would potentially conflict with proposed future development at the adjacent undeveloped property immediately east of the proposed location 9.2 site. The Planning Commission requested the applicant to review alternative sites to determine if there was a superior site for a development associated with location 9-2 that would avoid conflict with potential future development, allow the variable message sign to benefit more motorists within the community, and that had an existing visual character more suitable for the variable message sign and associated improvements. The Planning Commission suggested to the applicant the following alternative sites. The first was 2125 Coast Highway near Gorilla Barbecue. The second was south of Pacifica Police Station at 2075 Coast Highway. These sites were not considered viable options. These sites were reviewed by Caltrans and determined not to be viable options as adequate right-of-way space was not available to fit the variable message sign and the associated improvements. Additionally, these sites did not address all of the commission's concerns about informing more motorists, the visual character, and avoiding potential further development. A third location was also suggested by Planning Commission, which was north of the Pacifica Police Station, also referred to in the staff report as the Alternative North Site. This site does have adequate space in the right-of-way for the variable message sign and associated improvements. It would benefit more motorists specifically traveling out of Valley Mar and avoids conflict with future development. Additionally, the site was reviewed, had an environmental review, and was determined to have no additional environmental impacts. For these reasons, staff finds that this alternative to be the superior alternative and recommends this location for approval. Prior to publication of the agenda, staff received a comment letter from the public on this item. The comment letter was from the applicant of the Proposed Pacifica Highlands Project, which is a development application for a 45-unit residential development located just east of the proposed location 9-2. The commenter proposed a design that would slightly shift the proposed location 9-2 to the south to accommodate the driveway design of the proposed project on the abutting property. The comment was provided to Caltrans, and Caltrans determined that it might be possible to consider this proposed location, but further Caltrans analysis would be required. Additionally, since Alternative North Site, the Alternative North Site addresses Planning Commission's concerns related to the increased benefits to community motorists, and since it is located north of Rena Del Mar, Caltrans preferred to focus on Alternative North Site rather than requesting additional time to further research the Pacifica Highlands design. Finally, Caltrans was identified as the lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Act for the broader State Route 1 Traffic Operations System Improvement Project. Caltrans prepared and adopted an initial study with a negative declaration in May 2021. Due to the city's role in considering a discretionary permit for the subcomponents of SR1.
Looks like we may have lost Bonnie. We'll give her a minute in case it's just poor connection. Christian, in case it's Bonnie's connection.
For the SR1, because acting as a responsible agency.
Bonnie, you're back, it looks like.
Yeah.
All right.
Chair Verman, do you mind just maybe detailing for me where you lost me?
So if you could pull up the slide, I'm not sure if there was another slide after the one we were looking at.
This is the last slide.
So we were on this slide.
Okay. I will stop sharing, just in the event that that helps. So. Not knowing exactly where I left you guys in terms of the verbal presentation, I will just summarize by staff does recommend that the Planning Commission find the adopted ISM ND adequate for the purposes of CEQA for this project and does recommend approval of the location 9-2 at the Alternative North Site as condition for this project. That will conclude my presentation, and I will be available for questions.
Thank you, Senior Planner O'Connor. Does anyone on the commission have any questions? Commissioner Wright.
The process that we went through on this seemed to have us not going as smoothly and working together as well as we might. I'm wondering if staff might have any suggestions on future dealings with Caltrans on how we could not have to perhaps vote them down on something and work better together with them to come up with the right thing in the first place.
Um, yeah, that's. That's a fair comment. I think in general, our city communicates well with Caltrans through our Public Works Department. Getting those communication in between Public Works and Planning may be a benefit in terms of coordinating future projects. But that comment is noted.
I just want to be clear, I wasn't disappointed with what you guys did. It just seemed like there was some back and forth that we could have avoided, perhaps, and had a better spirit of cooperation. It seemed a little bit adversarial in our last meeting, and I'd like to in the future work with Caltrans. I appreciate that both you guys were able to work together and come up with an alternative site that in my mind's eye is far superior to where we started. Thank you all for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Domrath?
Are we expecting any presentation from Caltrans on what they feel or how they feel about this alternative? Do we have input from them at all today?
The applicant is present at the meeting, and they do have a presentation available.
I'd like to hear from, see what they have to say. Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for staff before we hear the applicant's presentation? All right, seeing no hands, then can we please hear from the applicant?
Sure, and Chair Verman, if you just provide me a moment, I'll start promoting those into the applicant as panelists.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, Bonnie, sorry, I'm trying to. Yeah, I, my name is Nandini Shridhar, and I'm the project manager for this project. I wanted to inform Bonnie before she started that, you know, she's already presented the facts of the case. We weren't planning to repeat that in our presentation, but we are here to answer any questions you might have. And as she mentioned in the last public hearing, the commission had voted on what we call the wireless detection device, which is like a shoebox thing that's, you know, a contraption that's mounted on existing signal poles. So that was at 9-1. And the 9-2 location, of course, the planning commissioners had pointed out that there was a conflict with the housing development. So we went along with the commission's recommendation of locating the VMS sign to the north of Rena Del Mar. And so that's what we have at the moment. And Bonnie can, we have a set of PowerPoint slides, and Bonnie can show you a simulation of that location that we are now proposing, which is consistent with what the planning commission desires. Would that be okay?
That sounds good to me.
And Chair Verman, do you mind if I ask? Nandi, do you have everybody present in this as a panelist that you need for your presentation? Or is there anybody else that I need to promote?
I'm trying to look at the participants. So there should be Chris Paddock, Ong Mong, Zachary Gifford, Nina, Nina may not present, but did you get Chris Paddock in and Ong Mong?
There we go. They accepted that. Okay, and I'll go ahead and share my screen with your presentation.
Yeah, most of it is what you've just described, but if we can show the simulation of 9-2, that'd be great. Okay, so what you're seeing here is the positioning of the variable message sign. And like Bonnie mentioned, the sign would be off most of the times, unless there's an emergency or an incident along the route. So this is what it would look like. It's five by 12, the panel itself. And the posts are about six feet from grade, I think. And of course, the metal beam guardrail is to protect the VMS and the motorists in case there was, you know, if something, if they were to veer off the route for any reason. Other than that, we've tried to use materials for the posts that are more in sync with the rural character of the route and its environment. And we've done our best to locate it in this location where there's already a billboard and power supply, which is critical for this VMS. So, and of course, I think the Planning Commission is aware that this is part of a much larger project which goes through other jurisdictions along the 20-mile segment of Highway 1 where we are proposing some other VMS signs as well. So if you have any questions over and about this, I have our team available.
Thank you, Nandini. Does anyone on the commission have any questions? For the Caltrans team? Commissioner Ferguson?
One quick question. I think this guardrail here is just proposed, future guardrail, right? Was there a guardrail on the original proposal of the reading matters? I'm just curious.
I believe there was, but the original proposal was also at an elevation. You know, it was slightly higher than the roadway. So I'm fairly certain there was. Ong, can you answer that question? Or is Abdul in? He's our design guy. Yes, I think we're fairly certain that there was a guardrail there. We tried to place it adjacent to the five VMS that we are proposing along the 20-mile stretch, so it's to prevent anything from hitting it.
Commissioner Wright.
I was just wondering if you have sufficient room in the event that you need to service this sign? Is it possible for you to pull off the roadway behind the guardrail in order to offer you some protection while you're working on the sign?
Again, I believe we do. We've looked into all of that, and we have the ability to obtain power supply and service the cabinets and the VMS as needed over time. Somehow I can't see anybody, so I'm not sure what's going on.
It's okay. I'll call out if there's any questions. I'm not seeing any hands.
Ong is our technical person, and I'm sure he, Ong, if you raise your hand, they can let you speak.
If there are any questions, I can assist, providing answers.
So did you hear the question they asked about having enough room?
Your answers are correct, Nandini. Yes, we do have the room to service the cabinet behind the guardrail.
Does anyone else on the commission have questions for the Caltrans team? Well, not seeing any hands. I just wanted to thank everyone on city staff and the Caltrans team for working together and coming up with this, in my opinion, superior location. I think it's going to benefit more people from the community, and it's in quite an efficient spot. So with that said, I will now open public comment on this item.
There are no hands raised. Chair Verman.
Thank you, Christian. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Commissioner Ferguson?
From my part, we've seen this once before. I'm reiterating, trying to see if any have changed aside from location. I feel pretty good about the changes made. I feel, echo your sentiment that it's a superior location in kind of every way. Gets to exactly what I had a problem with first time around, so I guess I'll leave it to Commissioner Liel in a second. But I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Liel, did you have anything to add, or were you ready to make a motion?
I was just going to make a comment. So first off, thanks, I'll echo Chair Verman's comments around thinking staff and Caltrans coming together and really turning this around quickly. I know it was a long process getting us to that first hearing. Maybe it'll turn around the change fairly quickly. I agree, this location's positive for the community. I was in favor of the original location at the time. I'm still in favor of this project. I would like to reiterate the need for this in this area. There is an incident roughly two weeks ago that could have potentially directed traffic up Sharp Park Road to avoid going south on 280 around Ceremony, where the sign could have been helpful, but given we don't have the sign, we didn't have that benefit to the community. So I do see the benefit here. And I do think it's my unofficial, my unofficial opinion is from the distance from the Sharp Park turnoff, Sharp Park Road turnoff to the sign is still about a half mile. So I feel that motorists can still get over in time if they do see a sign and make the adjustment to their direction of traffic within that half mile. So I agree with the comments already made. I will lower my hand and go back and mute if anyone has any more comments.
Does anyone have any more comments, or is anyone ready to make a motion? Commissioner Ferguson?
I'd be happy to make a motion. Give me one second here. I moved that the Planning Commission finds the State Route 1 Traffic Operational Systems Improvement Project post-miles for SM-1 26.43 to 47.20. post-miles for SM one twenty-six point forty-three to forty-seven point two zero. Uh, initial study with negative declaration, uh, May twenty twenty-one, schedule number two zero two zero zero eight zero two two, non-prepared by California Department of Transportation, districts for adequate for purposes of complying with the California Environmental Quality Act and approves coastal development permit, CDP four four zero two two. By adopting the resolution included as attachment A, the staff report including conditions of approval and exhibit A to the resolution and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner, Commissioner Leo?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Donrath?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yep.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Leo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And now on to our second item. Our second continues public hearing is file number two thousand twenty-two dash zero one seven text amendment TA dash one two two dash two two, initiated by the City of Pacifica to amend various Pacifica municipal code provisions to create zoning provisions applicable to processing and issuance of outdoor commercial permits for existing commercial businesses. The recommended SEQA action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under class one, class three, and class four exemptions under SEQA guidelines, section one five three zero one, one five three zero three, and one five three zero four, and under the general rule exemption in SEQA guidelines, section one five zero six one B three. Recommended action is adopt the attached resolution initiating the text amendment and recommending approval to city council. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Uh, good evening again, planning commissioners. I am Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The item before you is a proposed outdoor commercial permit ordinance to establish, establish regulations to allow outdoor commercial use and non-permanent structures within the public right-of-way or outdoor, outdoor areas for commercial activity as a tool for economic development and to encourage a sense of community. Um, in June twenty twenty-two, the city manager issued an emergency order relating to the operation of outdoor commercial activities in the public right-of-way and on private property during the period of a local emergency due to COVID nineteen. This order was ratified by the city council at a regular city council meeting on June eighth, twenty twenty-two to enable many businesses to survive the economic impacts of the pandemic. Since June twenty twenty-two, approximately thirty businesses have participated in the temporary COVID nineteen outdoor activities permit program. In August twenty twenty-one, the city council had a, held a study session regarding next steps for outdoor commercial activities. In response to the study session, council provided the following direction to staff. Support for the use of public right-of-way, inclusive, you, allow for inclusive types of covered businesses, uh, supporting of a hybrid approach for permitting, which should encourage business-to-business coordination, recognize, uh, recognizing existing outdoor activity licenses, set a density for outdoor permits, and set an hour and day limitation for live entertainment. November, in November twenty twenty-one, city council held a second study session to review collected community data and to receive further council direction. In response to the study session, council provided the following direction to staff. Support for parklets in the public right-of-way, that they should be available to the public. Uh, density standards should be developed for parklets in the public right-of-way. The city should develop pre-approved specs and designs to improve aesthetics, and staff should conduct conversations, early conversations with the coastal commission. The ordinance would benefit, um, um, the ordinance would benefit commercial businesses by allowing business or a group of businesses to conduct commercial activities outside an enclosed structure and would provide a process to allow businesses to conduct commercial activities in one of the following scenarios. In the parking light lane of a public right-of-way, sidewalk of a public right-of-way. Um, and here are two current examples that we have. With the exception of the sidewalk example, uh, this is not technically a sidewalk, um, uh, example, but it's visually what we would expect for our sidewalk applications. The other option, the, the other scenarios are off-street parking space areas on private property and existing, uh, and establishing on existing paved or solid surfaces and private property, which do not provide off, in areas that do not provide off-street parking spaces. And here are two more current examples of those scenarios. The proposed hybrid process is detailed here. Step zero would be required for potential applicants to seek, uh, seeking in an area in the parking lane of the public right-of-way. The council encouraged coordination between business owners to avoid appeal because this permit type is limited to one per block as the potential to trigger appeals. Um, after, uh, commercial business, after coordination between business owners, uh, a business sponsor would submit an application and materials to the city. Planning staff would then review and consult with other departments as necessary. If the site is in the coastal zone, we would then need to address the, um, permitting needs to address coastal acts. The planning director would then approve the outdoor commercial permit uh, based on making the findings that are set forth in the ordinance. A notice of approval would then be sent to a mailing radius, um, within three hundred feet to start a ten-day appeal period. If an appeal is timely filed, it would go, the item would be brought to planning commission. After final approval, if applying for an outdoor commercial permit in the public right-of-way, the applicant would need to obtain an encroachment permit. And before expiration of the one-year permit, the applicant would need to reapply. The ordinance would establish general provisions for the permit, including a list of eligible commercial uses, which would include retail, restaurants, personal services, art galleries, and instructional studios, offices, church, health and fist, and health and fitness clubs. Um, all other commercial uses shall not be eligible for outdoor commercial permits. Um, and business sponsor, uh, is able to obtain the maximum of one outdoor commercial permit. Um, it may apply for a public right-of-way or a private property permit and not both. The outdoor commercial permit is valid for one year, must be renewed annually. Only uses and hours consistent with the principal use of the permittee may be allowed. The outdoor permit area may not block public utilities or emergency response accessory points, access points and equipment. Uh, the outdoor area must contain ADA accessible features. The space must comply with ABC regulations. And the space would allow for non-amplified live entertainment between the hours of four PM and eight PM Thursday through Sunday. Additional provisions are identified depending on the scenario of the permit. Public right-of-way provisions include the requirement for an encroachment permit that the, um, area is open and accessible to the public at all times, that it may not block or interrupt bike lanes, requires the permittee to enter into a license agreement with the city. And if in the parking lane, one parking lane space may be, may be permitted on a segment of street between two abutting intersecting, intersecting streets and shall be issued on a first-come, first-served basis. Again, if in the parking lane, setbacks must be, uh, created from travel lanes, driveway, driveways, abutting parking spaces, and controlled intersections. If in the parking lane, uh, driveways, red curbs, and accessible parking spaces and accessible paths of travel shall not be blocked. Green and white curbs or inactive driveways will be considered on a case-by-case basis. Sidewalk applications must provide at least four feet for sidewalk passageway. And if in the sidewalk, no structures may be built on the sidewalk. The additional provisions for private property include um, that the outdoor commercial area must be continuous with the permit, permit's tenant space unless authorized by the property owner to use another space. The outdoor commercial area must be located on an existing level paved or surface area. If located on off-street parking area, no more than two off-street parking spaces or no more than ten percent of the total onsite parking spaces, whichever is greater, greater may be blocked. If in the off-street parking area, accessible parking spaces, accessible paths of travel and electrical vehicle charging stations may not be blocked. And off-street parking, if in the off-street parking area, setbacks from parking spaces, driveways, and travel lanes abutting the parking spaces and controlled intersections must be maintained. Other provisions include, uh, identifying that no parking exception for, um, for blocking off-street parking spaces would be necessary. Identifying that no variance process is available for this permit. If standards cannot be met, the applicant can pursue other permits for outdoor commercial use, such as a use permit. Um, that the area must comply with the coastal act. Outdoor commercial areas will likely be considered development. Staff is suggesting that we process an umbrella coastal development permit at a future hearing to address coastal act requirements for outdoor commercial permits that fit within the umbrella coastal development permit. Um, that the current temporary COVID nineteen outdoor activity permit holders will have six months from the effective date of this ordinance to obtain an outdoor commercial permit. That the permittee is responsible for development, relocation if needed, and removal of all furniture and structures within the designated area. And that the permittee has no vested rights or ownership interest in the public right-of-way. Additionally, staff prepared design guidelines to establish standards for development. These guidelines would be adopted by city council, but the guidelines would not be codified into the Pacifica municipal code. These standards include drainage standards, parklet engineering standards, structure height maximums, structure design provisions, electrical provisions, and fire provisions. Staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution initiating the text amendment and recommends approval, recommending approval to city council. That concludes the presentation and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Senior Planner O'Connor. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for staff? Commissioner Domret?
With everything we do with the city, I'm sure there's some fee structure for the permitting and, uh, the use of this area. Uh, is there an allocation of some kind of fee held in escrow that then, uh, when the permittee or user abandons that site, that any repairs or damages done to that area are then taken out of some escrow fee uh, or returned to them if there has been no damage? So if they, you know, are, are mounting something into the, that area of the right-of-way, that it's returned to the community in the same condition as it was given before they, they did any kind of modification to it?
Um, so the fees, the, the city council has directed staff to, uh, propose a flat fee, um, for this process. Um, and so those will be presented to city council with, you know, when this ordinance is ready to be adopted. Uh, in terms of your question of holding a deposit to address, um, potential damage, um, I believe that our encroachment permit process does have conditions that would require that. Um, however, in addition, we do, um, we are recommending that we require the applicants to, um, enter into a license agreement. And so, uh, possibly that is something that we can, um, add a condition to, to make sure that, um, sufficient funds are obtained to address any potential damage to, uh, the public right-of-way.
Great. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Leo?
Thank you, Chair. Um, my question is in relation to the use of these spaces and limitation of the public in using them. Many of these spaces, I imagine, will be in, uh, commercial areas which have multiple commercial businesses. And, um, the way that I'm, I'm reading it right now, it seems like it's, there's be an applicant process. Um, it, if patrons of other businesses get a cup of coffee, they want to sit in these spaces that are, um, approved for another business. For example, what, are there limitations related to that? And, and I guess who's enforcing or who controls kind of who can use these spaces or whatnot? Cause the way I'm kind of reading it, it's kind of a, an extension of the commercial business that applied for it. And if I get a coffee and I can't just go sit in a restaurant in the indoor place. So I'm just looking for clarification on that.
Yeah, so, um, for spaces that are in the public right-of-way, the space will be available to the public, uh, regardless of the fact of their, um, customers of the sponsoring business. Um, and so this is something that the city council is aware of. Um, they, they, uh, and believe from the experience of these parklets existing that the public will in general be mindful if a business says, hey, we, we need these spaces and do you mind sitting somewhere else or, you know, whatever? Uh, but, uh, I think, uh, the public will have the right to be there if they choose to be within the, within the public right-of-way spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Uh, first off, just wanted to say, uh, appreciate seeing this project. I thought it was great thoughtful work by, uh, staff and whomever put together all this language. Uh, and I think it's a great idea to continue this, great for especially my neighborhood, but all Pacifica, uh, having these outdoor spaces. Um, so a couple of questions I have regarding permitting. I noticed that there's, it, it seems like they're steered towards an encroachment permit for using the right-of-way. But it sounds like if ineligible, there's some other way to use this space using a use permit. Um, I don't know if you could explain when one might be method versus the other and what that difference is? Uh, if you don't mind me asking two questions, you can answer them, um, in succession. That'd be great. But my other question was, um, in a list of businesses eligible for an encroachment permit, it lists personal services and offices. Those both seem fairly vague to me. I don't know what a personal service is. Uh, so you could maybe give me some examples or if there is somewhere a specific list of what that is, that would be great.
Uh, sure. So, um, I'm gonna answer your second question first. So, um, uh, uh, an office, uh, our code does not have a definition of an office or, um, or personal services. Um, I, I believe in, um, past history, this is language that is included in our, uh, C one, um, uh, regulations, our, our neighborhood commercial regulations for permitted uses. Um, and in the past, I, I believe staff has interpreted personal service to be like barber shops or, um, nail salons or, um, even professional offices, um, such as medical or, uh, you know, um, insurance companies, um, and, and things of the like. Um, so we don't have definitions of those items, but I, we would continue to implement our current interpretations of those terms, uh, moving forward with these, um, with these permits. To answer your first question of the benefit of, uh, this permit versus a use permit. So, uh, currently our code does allow, um, a commercial business to obtain a use permit to conduct commercial uses outside of an enclosed permit or outside of an enclosed structure. Um, that process requires, um, a public hearing, um, to come to plan, planning commission for approval. And, um, often it's an expensive and time-consuming process that many commercial businesses are, are not eager to go through. Uh, the intention of this process is to provide a more streamlined process. Um, but with it comes some limitations of the extent that you're going to be allowed to, um, conduct your commercial business outside of it. Um, another Another benefit of this process is that it would allow you to do that business within the public right-of-way. Whereas that's not an option currently under our use permit process.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes, I actually have a couple of questions as well. I noticed in the picture that you showed of the building on the corner where they had the little bit of sidewalk furniture that was actually on the private property there. And in terms of for visually impaired people, I noticed that there wasn't any obstruction to stop people using a cane from running into those chairs or tables or whatever that sidewalk furniture was. Is that something that is being considered for any of these sidewalk issues like in the city typically they make them put a planter box there or something to alert people so they don't run into somebody's table full of food?
That is not a design requirement excuse me, of, of a sidewalk a public right-of-way space in the sidewalk. Currently, if it is required under ADA or, or you know, as part of the building code, we can implement those improvements as necessary, but that is not currently a requirement of the ordinance as drafted.
Okay, and then my next question is, you stated that it's a first come, first served basis. And I was wondering like if there's two businesses on the same block that would like to have access to the street and the end of the first year has come and somebody else wants to apply for one and somebody wants to reapply to keep their existing spot. How is that worked out?
Yeah, so, so it is on a first come, first served basis as long as the person is reapplying and reapplying and obtaining a renewed outdoor activities permit, they, they would be able to continue that use. I, the ordinance does require that the applicant for the parking lane scenario reach out to its commercial neighbors and inform them of their intent to apply or reapply for this permit. It was the council's desire that this type of communication would encourage some coordination in between the business owners to find a solution that helps everybody and to reduce appeals for applicants going through the process. So that, that's how the, the code is addressing that scenario.
Okay, and then my final question is in the event that people are putting up umbrellas or canopies or things to that effect. If we get a big wind and somebody gets hit by one of these flying things, we're not incurring any liability as a city for any of those kind of things that goes with the permit holder, is that true?
If I may, and my apologies, I'm having some lighting issues, so my camera is off at the moment. But yes, in, in order to have, in order to pay any liability to the city, we would have, there would have to be some sort of causal connection and a permit is very attenuated circumstance. In the event someone is injured by a windstorm or something of that nature stemming from something that occurs on this property. So they're, they don't foresee exposure based on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Godwin, I saw you had your hand up and then you put it down.
Yeah, I was going to ask the similar insurance question that was just asked, my question was answered, so I no longer have one.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Domarat?
So I think it may be similar to the question that was just asked, but I'd like to get a little bit further clarification. If the permit holder will have liability responsibility, is that true? Is that what, what the answer was that they would be liable for anything they would put up so it doesn't fall on somebody's head? And then assuming that if you're a member of the public and you go to that area and you do something that causes some kind of other kind of damage to someone else, why would you have the permit holder then liable for people that would use that area that are just a public that are not part of their business? So I'm, I'm just very, very leery about what Commissioner Leo, Leo brought up, I believe it was him, about the the, the public use of this thing. I, I, you know, if, so first if, if you charge someone a fee, it's basically a short-term lease for that space. And the city is going to allow it because it is city property. Then I'd be challenged if I remember the public to use that. So if you're a small restaurant and you take reservations and those three or four maybe areas are part of your business and you have members from the public, I mean, sitting there, then there, there's going to be a lot of conflict there. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm not sure then when you charge somebody a fee, what rights they have to tell others that, well, you can't use it. And the same thing would be for the liability. If, if that restaurant owner is liable, you know, then is he liable for members of the public that, that, you know, really he doesn't want to have there anyway? So I, I don't know, it, it sounds like a lot of confusion. And there could be a lot of challenges about, you know, things like liability insurance and that kind of thing, so. Is there a question there? I don't know. You can figure out a couple of questions out of that, but, but I thought it was an excellent point. When you start looking at the public using these spaces.
Senior Planner O'Connor, do you want to kind of respond?
Sure, I, I think the only clarification that I would make is that we would be charging them a fee to process the permit. I, I don't believe that the fee would be for the use of the space. And so not only has it been the recommendation of city council that we keep these spaces in the public right-of-way open to the public. I believe, and, and I might've missed this when Ms. Sharma spoke, when I dropped off again. I think it's our city attorney's recommendation that that's the status that we keep these public, these areas in the public right-of-way open to the public. So I, I don't have a good answer to your question, but it's, it was, it's noted.
Please go ahead, Ms. Sharma.
But this, I just want to clarify that this is not a lease agreement consistent with Senior Planner Connor's statement. So there isn't a charge for using the space and only processing costs. And, and again, the liability depends on the specific circumstance. So it's hard to, to, to opine on a hypothetical circumstance of when a member of the public could file suit against a business owner. But I think in pursuant to licensing agreements, encroachment permits, and just by a city permitting decision, the city itself would not have exposure for approving this ordinance. That's, those are my comments.
And Chair Berman, if I may, Mr. Domarat, I think another component to this response is that it is an option for a business owner or owners to enter into this type of public right-of-way facility that would expose them to whatever risk that you're perceiving, you know, may be present. They're not obligated to undertake that and there are other options to undertake outdoor uses on private property, for instance, where they may have the right to exclude general members of the public to manage their exposure.
Commissioner Wright?
Just another quick follow-up on that. Would it make sense for us to recommend to council that they consider adding language to have us be named as additional insured or perhaps be indemnified once the permit is issued?
Is that, Ms. Sharma, is that a question that maybe you can help answer?
That indemnification is, is usually a standard provision in encouragement agreements. I would imagine that is also true for the City of Pacifica, although planning director may be able to answer that more specifically, but that, that is a standard provision and permit sites.
And I believe such language is already in the recommended ordinance text on page 293. I believe it's subsection 5204F. Proof of commercial liability, insurance and endorsements showing the City of Pacifica as an additional insured on such policy.
Thank you, that comes to me about that.
All right, seeing no other hands, I'm going to ask a couple of quick questions before we go on to public comment. Um. The, in regards to the non-amplified sound, does the City of Pacifica consider like just a standard like boombox speaker amplified sound? Or is literally the use of any projection of sound other than acoustic guitar considered a non-amplified or amplified rather?
This is Bonnie, I will take that one. So the intention was that it's all acoustic. Boombox would be considered amplified. You can, you know, increase and decrease the volume on the speakers, so. I believe that would be considered amplified music. So it, the intention is purely acoustic.
Okay. And then my other question, and this may be addressed just in the building code requirements that are of course implied. But is there intended to be lighting requirements for the parklets? Cause I, I did see in the staff report that there shall be no electrical hookups directly connecting to the parklets. But there could be battery powder, battery-powered electrical facilities there. So I'm wondering if there's intended to be lighting requirements, like foot candle requirements in the parklets?
There's no standards that are provided in the ordinance or the guidelines for that, other than the fact that they would be allowed as long as they're not connecting to the city power or crossing the public right-of-way. So that, but there's no specific lighting requirements for that.
And Ms. O'Connor, please confirm, I think they're also prohibited from using internal combustion generators. So they would need some sort of other battery pack, if you will, to power such a lighting source.
That's correct.
Okay, I have a couple of other questions and comments, but I'll save them until after public comment. Commissioner Domarat, did you have another question before public comment?
You know, this was taking everybody by surprise a few years ago, so I was just wondering, did the city have an opportunity to do any lessons learned from any other communities on the peninsula or in San Francisco? I mean, I'm trying to go through my head and look at the whole community of Pacifica and where this would happen. We don't have as much as someplace like San Francisco would have, where you'd have a lot of competition for that sidewalk space. I was just wondering if there was any lessons that you learned from what maybe others have done, their successes, their failures and challenges that they may have made.
Our ordinance is a little bit more unique than what I've seen for other jurisdictions. Many other jurisdictions are primary outdoor dining ordinances. It's been the city's desire to make this much more of an inclusive, inclusive ordinance. Therefore, it kind of brings some new aspects to it that we may have to go through some lessons learned with. But the ordinance as designed now is, is based off of and the temporary ordinance that, you know, we've been operating under the last two years and that the council has kind of provided us direction further on based on what they've heard of what's working or what's not working or what they want this to, you know, include or, or otherwise, so. You know, I, I don't know if we've, we've received so many lessons learned from other or other jurisdictions, but I, I think we've definitely incorporated lessons learned from ourselves.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I didn't check for this, but I'd like to know more and more people are bringing dogs to outdoor restaurants in these kind of personal service things. Are there any restrictions on animals or are they prohibited or how is that handled?
There is no mention of dogs, whether they're permitted or not in the ordinance.
What if a member of the public shows up with a dog and, you know, that's a needing establishment or whatnot? It seems like there's some room for some conflict between what people assume is appropriate and inappropriate.
Yes, but viewing this as an extension of, you know, the sidewalk or, or, you know, just a public area space. It, it doesn't change the conflict that may occur under current scenarios.
Okay.
Commissioner Wright?
Could you refresh my memory about what our policy is on those propane heaters? And if we consulted with the fire department to make sure that they're on board with that? Thank you.
So the, the fire department has reviewed the guidelines in terms of the propane, the heating elements. They, the, the design guidelines does include buffers that need to be maintained from these units and fire extinguisher minimums that need to be established to support the, or to, to accompany those, those types of heating elements.
Thank you.
All right, not seeing any other hands, I will open up public comment.
Chair Berman, there are no hands raised.
All right, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for more questions and deliberation. Commissioner Wright?
With our new sharp park plan, it seems to me that if we're trying to promote that area and draw in more restaurants and more of that sort of thing, that perhaps one little parklet in our main business sectors may not be enough. Is there any contemplation of increasing that number? Are we just going to wait and see how it goes with the one and from there?
There, there are concerns of, you know, allowing too many parklets and the, the impact that it may have on coastal access. And so managing it at one per, one per block does help the city in the future when we want to come back for an umbrella CDP to help to help those applicants build a parklet without having to get their own CDP. It, it just kind of helps with that standard and that finding that, you know, that coastal access will not be impacted.
And Commissioner Wright, I'll add that, you know, I'm sure we all understand that it's easier to give than to take. And so starting conservatively, perhaps with one space per block, seeing how that goes and how all the different impacts can be balanced, as Ms. O'Connor said. Parking among them is probably a prudent approach and staff's recommendation. And at some point in the future, if appropriate, you know, the city could add additional spaces per block or have some other criteria for determining an appropriate number.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Uh, a quick question. There's a note on the potential for coastal use permitting um, in the coastal zone, which would be all of West Sharp Park, which I think a lot of this is applicable. Um, in the current temporary system that we have, does, does that apply? Do you, are people going before the coastal commissioner, getting some kind of a coastal use permit for anything they're doing in the street in the coastal zone? Or is it just not hap- not occurred yet?
Uh, no, the applicants under the temporary um, COVID nineteen, the temporary outdoor activity permit did not um, obtain any coastal development permit for their spaces. Um, and so this, this would be a change from that.
And that would apply all businesses in the coastal zone?
Uh, we will have to uh, review them on a case by case basis, but likely, yes. The, the placement of furniture or structures will be considered development. Um, and all development is triggering of a coastal development permit unless it's exempt. We don't currently have any exemptions that um, you know, clearly apply to a, a mass um, scenario. Uh, and so we believe that proceeding with an umbrella CDP would uh, basically serve as that kind of um, streamlined process that the city will do that for the applicant. So they, they can check that off their list as long as they meet the standards of what the umbrella CDP details.
Good, good thorough answer. Thank you.
I'll uh, jump in and ask some of my questions now. Um, I'm gonna start with the guidelines, the draft guidelines that start on packet page three eighty-six. Um, thank you for preparing this. I think this is very helpful and it will be helpful for business owners that want to pursue this. Um, in the general standards regarding the wire and electrical cords, can we add some mention of ensuring that they're not tripping hazards? I know the intent is not to have cords span into parklets, but if there are any electrical cords used, I don't know, even not for the parklets, um, I just want to make sure that there's no tripping hazards.
Yes, that, that, we can add that.
Okay. Um, and then also in that same general standard section, uh, I guess this is a question, was consideration for vehicular site triangles considered? Or will that be a part of the encroachment um, permit process I'm imagining for any parklets in particular?
Um, so uh, site triangles specifically were not um, were not considered. Um, however, in the ordinance, um, parklets uh, will need to be set back from intersections at least twenty-five feet. Um, that was reviewed by our engineering department, um, and that was found to be adequate. But specific triangles of, of each intersection was not conducted.
Okay. Um, that's what I wanted to hear. I just wanted to ensure that Public Works kind of was able to give their input. Um, then moving on to the next section of the, the guidelines, let's see, it's section two. Um, I'm sorry, section three for additional standard, standards for a designated outdoor commercial area on the sidewalk of a public right of way. Can we just add mention of maintaining the four foot minimum sidewalk clear here? I know it is mentioned, I believe it's mentioned in the ordinance language, but I, I feel like these guidelines are going to be more easily referenced by um, business owners.
Yes, we can do that.
Thanks. And then lastly, for section four of the guidelines, um, for the additional standards for a designated outdoor commercial area on private property. Um, I'm wondering if it would be beneficial to just clarify that these need to remain outside of emergency vehicle access lanes?
Um, uh, my only suggestion to that addition is um, maybe the word necessary. Um, I believe that we currently have one outdoor activity area that uh, is within a um, emergency access pathway. Um, but I believe that our emergency service responders have found that it's not a necessary access way. Um, so I would
Sounds counterintuitive.
Um, uh, maybe I would suggest the word necessary in front of your uh, addition.
Okay. Um, it's just, and I, it's something that came to mind that I wanted to bring up. If, if your team and um, the fire department does not believe it will be a burden to them if there's kind of furniture and potentially some semi-permanent structures encroaching into EVA lanes um, on private property, then I, I'll defer to their opinion. Um, I see Commissioner Leo's hand is up. I have some comments on the text amendments, but I'll kind of break it up um, and pass it off to Commissioner Leo.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just have some general comments. Um, no questions. I um, I, it's hap- I'm happy to see this program finally coming um, into um, some sort of formality within the City of Pacifica. Um, I think these spaces are great, and this was something that we initially, I know we talked about probably five or six years ago when I was on the Economic Development Committee, as putting something like this, um, making it more official within the City of Pacifica, and it only took us um, a pandemic to, to make it happen. But here we are. Um, I see that as a great opportunity, especially with other um, with the Sharp Park specific plan, local supply and general plan, but these other plans in progress. I think it's, it's great to see the momentum here um, with this happening. Um, so general, um, in favor of this um, program, I did want to just add another comment around kind of the amplified music and the hours in which um, and the days in which it was, it was limited to, or the, uh, sorry, the lack of amplified, amplified music. Um, uh, my initial reaction when I was reading the um, the guidelines around four to eight, I initially thought of eight PM was quite early to cut it off, especially if it was not amplified. Um, I thought maybe ten PM was more appropriate timing. But um, as I was doing some research on businesses that may be using this space and may have um, live entertainment, um, most of them closed by eight PM. At least that was what their listed hours were. So um, I initially was reading and was, was going to propose, maybe we change those hours. But after looking at the businesses who most likely use them or are currently using them under the, the um, the guidelines we have today, uh, due to pandemic, um, they close at eight PM anyway. So um, I'm not going to suggest any changes to that for now. And um, as stated in the staff report, we have the opportunity to, to change in the future. Um, this isn't written in stone, but um, if there is a need or demand to expand that in the future, we can, we can uh, that's definitely on the table. So um, those are just my two comments and that's it.
Thanks, Commissioner Leo. And your comment actually overlaps with another one that I had. Um, regarding the amplified music, I, in my experience at utilizing parklets in other cities, I, I personally enjoy when there is some just light background music or an extension of whatever's playing in the restaurant is kind of extended to the parklet. I think it's a nicer experience. Um, so I would hate to restrict businesses from appropriately playing just moderately quiet um, harmless music. So I'm, I'm wondering if instead perhaps just the noise ordinance section can be referenced in this text or perhaps a decibel limit? Um, I just, I feel like the non-amplified definition is a little limiting. It's effectively anyone with an acoustic guitar or just their voice. Um, so like not even a microphone. Uh, wondering if anyone else's opinion on the commission or staff's um, kind of response?
Not seeing any other commissioners at this point. Chair Berman, I'll jump in. I'll just add um, from the staff's perspective, that regulation of noise is one of the most challenging um, community impacts to regulate. The equipment needed to do some sort of quantitative measurement uh, can be difficult to obtain, uh, to keep calibrated and to make widely available. Uh, and, and other more subjective uh, measures such as, you know, disturbing noise level is very subjective, uh, as mentioned, and difficult, I think, to apply fairly and uniformly. Um, I wish we had someone here from the police department as well to, to comment on their experiences, um, you know, regulating loud and unruly parties, for example. Um, I think I would suggest that the commission delineate some reasonable balance. If you want something more than non-amplified music, then maybe setting some sort of distance standard where it's no, no longer audible. That's perhaps easier to apply and to understand as well for the business owners uh, who also need some guidelines um, as to how loud their music can be. And if they could pace off twenty-five feet or whatever the commission determines is an appropriate distance for managing that impact, um, that might be a more workable standard than referencing uh, another ordinance or a particular decibel level.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. Commissioner Leo?
Thank you, Chair. Um, just to kind of add comments to what you were saying, I, I feel with kind of the non-amplification as well as the hours, we kind of um, tip the scales too far in terms of the kind of the entertainment value where um, I think it may overcorrect for um, uh, anecdote examples of, of someone with a full drum set um, with no amplification may produce much more noise than someone on their guitar with a microphone um, with a small speaker. And so I understand the intent of what we're trying to get to here, but I think the way it's written, it, it still doesn't get to the intent of what folks are looking for. And in reading the, the council's study session comments, as well as I think public comment that was provided previously, a lot of people looked at it a way of um, measuring decibels. I know um, Plan Director uh, Murdoch just said it's, yes, it's very hard to measure that right. So I'm um, if we had some way to kind of provide guidance, that would be great. I don't know if there's any precedent in terms of other examples that maybe San Francisco put out or other jurisdictions um, that we could use. But I would, I would be in favor in terms of adjusting that um, to allow for some level of amplification. Um, if we can find the right um, examples or, or some other person that's been done in other jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you. I value your opinion. Um, we can put a pin in that and go on to Commissioner Wright.
I too would support the general idea of some soft music playing in the background that isn't disturbing of other people or nearby people. For example, in our new Sharp Park Plan, living in the residential spaces above with small children who go to bed at eight o'clock at night. So, and I did like um, Director Murdoch's suggestion of a certain number of feet away, that it be in, in audible, but I, I could, could support that. I also happen to have a decibel meter. If you did want to actually do measurements, um, I could help you with that.
On-call decibel reader consultant. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Domaret?
Every iPhone, you can measure decibels on your iPhone. So there's apps for that. I used to measure how loud the trains were on Bart every time it's going through the tunnel and it's shaking. It's like violently loud, I would measure the decibel. So everybody who has an iPhone, probably all the other phones, you can get an app that'll measure decibels. The thing is, who would formally measure it? That's kind of an official measurement. You'll probably get neighbors coming next door and saying, look, your decibels are so high now. So the measurement of decibels is, is an issue. If you want to do it, it's very easy to do. But I think what this is all pointing out is going to be kind of situational. If you're somewhere like Pedro Point Shopping Center, uh, and you have a little bit louder music that, you know, from so, so, so your neighbors are going to tell you whether or not it's, it's appropriate or not. If you have a small restaurant and it's in a neighborhood where, you know, little children never go to bed at eight o'clock. Mine didn't go till midnight. Anyway, that's a different story. Uh, yeah, I just think it's going to be situated. So I think it's going to kind of monitor itself, you know? You gotta be respectful of your neighbors and, and if you're doing something and it's too loud and too long, uh, then officially, you know, you ought to kind of change it. So I, I, I don't see that to be, be an issue. I think it's a, a good idea to these, do these things. I just think there will be some challenges with, you know, in certain areas, not all areas, but certain areas, certainly like in Rockaway Beach of people coming in and just walking in and sitting in these areas when the restaurant is depending on it, you know, for their business. I, I just think we'll see some challenges there, but, but otherwise I think it's a, it's great that we're at least moving forward on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Domaret. Um, well, we could, we could circle back to the noise aspect um, and let people kind of ruminate on it. In the meantime, I have another item that I wanted to deliberate on, and it's my concern with the mad rush that I feel may happen on a block that has a lot of really vibrant commercial businesses. Um, and, and I'm wondering, well, I guess first one clarification question. The one permit per block, does that include both sides of the street?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And then also the one permit per block, does that also include just um, tables and chairs on the sidewalk?
No, that density limitation is only applicable to the um, outdoor commercial permits in the parking lane.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, so I'm wondering what other members of the commission might think of or agree with my concern of not allowing equity to the businesses if multiple businesses aren't necessarily able to use the same parklet because they're across the street from each other. Commissioner Domaret?
Just for the sake of example, uh, being in Seattle just not too long ago, so, some of these communities where it's all commercial and it's almost all restaurants, everybody has their own parklet right next door to each other and, and everything seems to work really great. So the sidewalk is open, people pass by, uh, the parklets, you know, are, are being used. I don't know if they're open to the public or not. I, I don't know if that's a challenge there, but you've had one after another, every single restaurant had its own parkland or right next to each other. So, and it didn't, you know, everybody seemed to be pretty happy about that. So I'm not sure if it's a challenge or not, other than kind of the safety issue and the, the traffic pattern issue and so forth. So that's just a little experience I've had.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
I share your concern with the opposite side of the street issue. And I also share your concern about the initial onslaught of applicants. And I would suggest that it might be a better thing to open up an appli- initial application period, say for a period of two weeks, and then have a lottery if there are multiple applicants as opposed to a strict first come, first served type of thing. It's just a thought.
I'm wondering staff's opinion on that. I guess uh, why did staff land on the first come, first served approach versus something like a lottery?
Um, so I will just add that a lottery system can be a little complex to create and um, can be complex to manage. Um, so that was um, why I didn't draft that um, style up for, for this. Um, however, I, I don't know if I share the commission's concern about a onslaught of on-street um, parking lane applicants coming in right of way. Um, currently applicants can um, seek to establish these spaces under the temporary outdoor activities permit process, which permit process, which has currently a lot less standards that would need to be met in order for them to do that. And we only have two of those applicants within the entire city. So um, I, I don't see why in the um scenario where the requirements are a little bit more stringent and um, you know, the process is a little bit more complex, why they would all of a sudden then want to establish an on-street um parking space, but um, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Senior Planner O'Connor. I, I think you bring up a good point, and that is a good perspective to have, the fact that um, the current process to open a parklet is simpler than what it's going to be. And currently, I believe it's only a grape in the fog and breakers um that I'm aware of that utilize the right-of-way parking. Uh, Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, that kind of support uh Senior Planner O'Connor's point, at least in my casual going out in the, on the peninsula, it seems like the number of places with parklets is going down, not up. So um, the idea we're going to have a great rush to do something that other people don't seem to want seems a little optimistic to me.
Thank you. Commissioner Domraat?
Yeah, I think we may see it be seasonal also. So with, with uh kind of the temperatures we have now, everybody would want to sit outside. Uh, but you know, as we get into our kind of winter timeframe, I think you'll see less and less people utilizing it. So we could have a seasonal situation where during the summer months, um, you know, we'll see more, more use, more applications. And uh, you know, in the wintertime, we wouldn't.
Thank you, Commissioner Domraat. Um, I guess I, I think my concern is addressed. I, and especially knowing that this is kind of our first attempt, I uh establishing a permit process for the parklets especially. We could always revisit this. Uh, I guess Senior Planner O'Connor, what would be the process of revisiting this? Is it possible to kind of receive an annual report a year after this is established and amend the text if necessary, if deemed necessary?
Yeah, that, that is an option um for, uh, you know, planning commission to recommend. Um, and, and that might be a recommendation that the city council is supportive of. Um, I, I think outside of that, it, it's just going to be the council members hearing from their um constituents of, you know, what's working and what may not be working and, and directing staff accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Domraat?
I guess uh, with, for, in a similar note, if an applicant puts in an application, is there an appeal process from others in the neighborhood maybe against that? Would that then drive the potential to make changes as we go if there's an appeal process that I guess would be brought in front of the commission?
Potentially, um, I, I don't know if that's an automatic assumption. Um, if a permit gets appealed, um, because someone doesn't agree that um staff has made the appropriate findings in issuing the, the permit, uh, you know, that we'll process that as we would any other administrative appeal where we bring that to planning commission to take action on it. Um, it, it may be at that uh, at that time that, you know, you, you may see a need for um an edit or, or a revision to address the, uh, an issue.
Um, I guess hypothetically, not necessarily recommending that we pursue this right now, but would it be possible to add um a provision for subsequent permits on one block, given that there, they go through public hearing and, and review by the planning commission? So if, if there's already one parklet on a, let's say, on Palmetto, and um, that was the first come, first served business, then the next year that business re-appears and gets it again, and then another business across the street wants to open a parklet, can they pursue a different path to getting a permit potentially where it certainly has to go through planning commission review?
I think the alternative path that, 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 um, commercial business owner would have is to find another business that they could team up with to place a parklet in front of maybe, uh, you know, a, a business that's a block away. So it wouldn't be in front of their property, but it would be in front of their, um, their co-business sponsors' property. So as, as drafted, I think that's their, the only alternative path that the ordinance um provides for.
Okay. I don't, logistically, I don't know if I agree with that approach, uh, depending on what the service is, but um, I guess I, I'm not overly concerned right now. So I'd much more be in favor of, you know, approving the, the text as written and as deliberated on tonight. Um, but something to consider for the future. I do want to circle back to my questions about lighting. Um, I think it, it is important to have the parklet areas properly lit. Um, so I don't know if the best means to do that is through the encroachment permit review process. Um, whether it's some form of the building code can be applied to the parklet, but I do feel that the parklets need to be properly lit. Uh, circling back to the noise item that we talked about earlier, does the commission want to look into a different means of measuring the noise output, or are we okay with the text as written for non-amplified? Commissioner O'Leal?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I did do a little bit of research while um, the other questions and comments were being um made and um, I have a couple of examples I'd like to share with my fellow commissioners of what other jurisdictions are doing. So um, first one is Santa Monica. They don't allow any amplified, so similar to our, uh, our proposed ordinance. Santa Monica is, is the same. Um, San Francisco though does quantify the um, their rules for outdoor use of amplified sound. So in addition to illuminating hours, um, uh, they also have a permitting process for these events, but um, what it says in their, in their pamphlet, I would say, um, is the volume of sound must be controlled so that it's not audible more than 250 feet from the furthest attending audience member. So 250 feet, um, you can visually quantify that as probably, oh, I don't know, I'm not the expert in measuring blocks and how long a standard block is in Pacifico, but um, seems like a reasonable amount of distance. Um, and then what I found in San Francisco, as well as in Half Moon Bay's um code is that there's some, what I think is um, uh, it's, it's not quantifiable, it's qualitative. It's a amplified sound may not be unreasonably loud, raucous, jarring, or disturbing to persons with normal sensitivities within the area of audibility. That's what San Francisco's Half Moon Bay has a similar um language around being uh unreasonably loud or raucous, raucous. So um, it, it's hard to probably quantify that. Um, but the, but those are kind of examples that I will define um based off of quick, quick searches.
Chair Berman, um, I also um thought about the question of noise, uh, while the commission was considering some other points. Um, similar to what Commissioner O'Leal found in San Francisco, uh, I referenced the, the general plan, um, outdoor allowable noise levels for commercial areas. In general, they're 65 decibels. And so if you're to consider that hopefully an outdoor activity is not generating more than that um level of noise, then uh, generally speaking, the estimated distance is about 175 feet before that noise approaches the uh ability of humans to perceive it with ordinary human hearing. And so it's a, a pretty similar amount, that may be a little more conservative than what Commissioner O'Leal found. But um, you know, 175 foot distance uh being imperceptible at that distance would seem to achieve uh consistency with the general plan, um, noise levels, and be something that's readily quantifiable by an enforcing agent or officer.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch and Commissioner O'Leal. That's extremely helpful. I personally am in favor of radial uh perceived noise limit. Um, I don't know, Mr. Murdoch, if you have, given your position, do you have a recommendation of a preferred distance if it's radial or decibel, if it's a objective limit?
Uh, I, I do. And I, I did want to add for context also to Commissioner O'Leal's point about a block distance. Uh, for point of reference, um, the distance from Montecito Avenue to Santa Rosa Avenue on Palmetto is about 190 feet. And so that gives you a sense to say, okay, we don't want the noise basically spilling over, you know, to the next block or multiple blocks beyond that. It seems to be a pretty workable standard in my judgment. Um, and I, I would recommend not tying it to a decibel level, but a, a perception level with an objective distance. I, I think it is readily available for city staff or the police or whomever to take out a wheel and measure with that as equipment that is, is readily available to us and um to use that sort of ordinary human uh perception standpoint. I think it also is favorable to the business operators because any additional background noise from vehicles or um, you know, other sources of sort of background noise are likely to um attenuate that, that noise source, um, you know, at less than that distance.
Thank you. I agree with that. That sounds reasonable to me. So then I guess, do we land on 175 or 150? Commissioner Wright?
I could support the 175 number.
I'm seeing a head nod for Commissioner O'Leal. Thumbs up from Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Godwin, what's your opinion?
I'm still thinking about it, but I would, I like the ideas. It's something about um, the level of a, of a loud truck coming, coming by, which I think is around 60 decibels. So I guess somewhere around 150 feet would, would be a reasonable distance if people wanted to use that. But I'm still looking up a couple of references to see what I
Chair, thank.
Finally think.
Uh, Commissioner Domraat, what are your thoughts?
150 and we modify it later. If it's, if it doesn't seem loud enough, we can go to 175 or 200, you know, uh, just settle on a number and wait, you know, we can change it later. 150 sounds good. More rounded than 175.
All right. I guess I'll, I'll leave it to whoever makes the motion. Um.
Chair, Chair Berman, if you don't mind, uh, for my benefit, do you mind just clarifying if that's the um limitation within the same hours and days as detailed in the ordinance?
My, my assumption is that it would be. I'm wondering if any other commissioners have thoughts. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I had a thought on the hours as well. And I know uh, I certainly don't brought up the eight o'clock. Actually, I actually do think is appropriate for people. Sometimes myself who works shift work and just don't have regular hours, it's sometimes nice not to have music playing. Uh, but my actual thought was that it's maybe starts too late, especially for the weekend and no music before 4:00 PM. You're missing, uh, if you look at, you know, when the influx of people were here this weekend, we're trying to attract tourists and create space. Uh, I think 4:00 PM, you'd miss more than half of the kind of useful hours in playing music and attracting people. Um, you're just starting at four, that's when people tend to be heading home from the beach and pay back early help. So if it worked to me, I, I'd put it to probably noon or 11:00 AM. Uh, you probably choose everyone happy and be able to sleep in. Uh, and that would just be for Saturdays and Sundays.
So just for Saturdays and Sundays. And then Commissioner Ferguson, do you think on um Thursdays and Fridays, you'd support starting at 4:00 PM still?
Yeah, I do. I don't know what drove that 4:00 PM start time, if it was a, you know, to be respectful of schools and whatever else might be going on. Um, but I, I don't see a reason to bring it earlier than that.
Okay, so.
This is just for the parklet application, right? Because you, you look at a business like Winters that plays music outdoors in there, private parking lot there clearly using it outside of these hours currently.
I believe the language is under the general provisions applicable to all permitees. I don't know, staff, do you want to um clarify whether this only applies to parklets or if it's all permitees?
Sure. Uh, so to clarify, it's for all uh permitees.
So then if that's the case, if you're allowed to run a jackhammer or a, or a hammer drill on concrete at my next door neighbor, I have no problem with somebody playing music. If, I mean, if that really is, is that the limitations anywhere, private commercial property that's outdoors also, um, I would say that we put it to, to 8:00 AM.
So then I guess to try to summarize um what we're getting at for a motion, um, I support Commissioner Ferguson's recommendations or ideas on adjusting the noise aspect of the provision. Um, and so I believe it was for Thursdays and Fridays, the provision would remain from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And then on Sat, oh, I'm sorry, would it be Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays? Commissioner Ferguson or?
Yeah, it's Friday, Saturday, Sundays.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Recognized public holidays.
Um, would, well, I guess Saturday and Sunday would start at noon.
I, I'm fine with pushing Friday to noon as well. I don't know what businesses really would be taking advantage of that, but if it helps somebody, then great.
Okay. Commissioner Wright?
And public holidays also, correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure how we quantify that, but I think that's a big opportunity, right? For, that's when we're getting our biggest influx of tourists.
So then I guess, uh, Bonnie, do you, do you think you have direction? Should the commission pass a motion and approve kind of where we're getting at with this noise language?
So the consensus that I heard was revising the noise, uh, standards to allow for um live entertainment to be audible for a distance of 175 feet from the source and allowing it to occur 4:00 to 8:00 PM on Thursday and 12:00 to 8:00 PM on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, and maybe uh, if the commission is open to it, we can add uh city observed holidays.
Yeah, that sounds great.
I'm in favor of that, too.
I am as well.
Chair, I would perhaps suggest uh, an alternative approach to, to federal holidays. Those are enacted by law and there's, it's a, I think, a more standardized reference. To my knowledge, there are no city uh adopted holidays, but there are holidays observed and memorandism of understanding with the unions. And I think it's a confusing hodgepodge of, of sources.
Okay, federal holidays, that, that's quantitative and a. Okay. Any other thoughts from the commission? Okay, any other thoughts from the commission?
Chair Berman, there were a handful of other potential revisions that the commission discussed, not all of which I'm clear on there being a commission consensus. If now is the appropriate time, I can read through those and we can get head nods or confirmation if that's not the consensus of the commission.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So Commissioner Domarat had mentioned efforts to obtain a sufficient deposit or bond for damage to the public right of way to ensure it's returned to the pre-permitted condition. I think we discussed that that was handled in the encroachment permit process, and there are standard conditions to that effect. I checked on the Public Works website, so I think that that issue is likely already addressed. But I don't know if there's a desire for the commission to insert something in the ordinance.
I see a head shake from Commissioner Domarat, and that's fine with me.
Okay, so we will delete that. Commissioner Wright recommended requiring some sort of delineation of sidewalk furniture for visually impaired persons to prevent them from walking into tables and chairs. I think we're unclear on whether that's a uniformly applicable standard in the California Building Code and the commission may want to include that to ensure the safety of those persons with visual impairments.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, within the parklet provisions that are mentioned in the documents, is there any provisions for like securing the space as far as it is in a parking spot? You're you're not, I assume, just putting out a table and chairs into the parking spot. There's some provision for a physical barrier to, you know, separate from traffic. I saw like a one foot buffer zone, but I didn't see anything. Maybe I just didn't look close enough. It speaks specifically to, you know, the size and the protection of the visibility of separating that space from the, you know, the roadway and adjacent parking spots.
Sure. Ms. O'Connor, do you want to touch on those barrier requirements and the types of permitted locations that they would apply to?
Yeah, so in the design guidelines, there are those types of standards that are applicable to designated outdoor commercial areas in the parking lane of the public right of way. It has load bearing weight minimums. It has it details impact standards for the walls. It needs to be able to manage, you know, so much of an impact. And then those are actually repeated for parklets that are created on private property as as well. So it's a perimeter wall or parklet end with quarter corners being able to withstand five hundred pounds of horizontal force. And reinforce wall reinforcement with standing five hundred pounds of horizontal force placed every fifteen feet. So those types of standards are included in the guidelines.
Commissioner Wright?
Is there something in there about obstructing streets, vision of street signs? For example, if you have a eight foot high parklet structure and you're blocking a no parking during certain hours sign. And somebody parked next to the parklet then gets cited for a sign they couldn't see. Is there some kind of language in there for that?
There is not currently any language for that. I will note that the parklet standards do allow for the the side, the sidewalls of the parklet to be of a certain height, and then the remaining height needs to be opaque or being able to see through the parklet above a certain height. But there's there's no standard that specifically address the need to not block street signs.
Thank you.
So Ms. O'Connor, trying to interpret your discussion of the barriers, is it your opinion then that the existing standards would achieve Commissioner Wright's desired barrier to protect visually impaired persons?
So those standards would be adequate to address the visually impaired in the in the parking lane scenario of the public right of way, but not the sidewalk scenario for the private or for the public right of way.
Okay, and so Chair Berman, I'm seeking a consensus from the commission if adding that requirement to sidewalk locations is desired.
Okay, so Commissioner Wright, I guess maybe you might want to start on your thoughts. I think you were bringing up the concern that tables and chairs in the sidewalk especially pose a hazard for someone walking with a cane or a visually impaired person. I guess, what are your thoughts on adding provisions for planters or some barrier to be between, I guess, the commencement of the rest of the sidewalk? In the lot, in the longitudinal manner, and then the start of the chairs and the tables?
Yes, it's been my experience in the city with a lot of my friends who have sidewalk encroachment permits that that is a requirement there. And typically, people build planters on wheels so they can wheel them out of the way at the end of the day. And that serves a multitude of masters. It separates off their space and does offer the visually impaired an impediment before stumbling into a table and chairs, for example. So I would be in favor of adding some kind of language that staff would support to to get there.
I agree with you. I think it's also a better experience for the person sitting in the outdoor chairs and tables. You feel like you're in a more appropriate dining space rather than just on the sidewalk. Anyone else from the commission?
Yeah, I agree with both of your sentiments.
Thanks, Commissioner Ferguson. I see some head nods from Commissioner Leo and Commissioner Domarat and Commissioner Godwin, so I think we've reached a consensus on that. Thank you.
Terrific. So I package that into requiring delineation of sidewalk furniture such as with a fence or planters, not more than forty two inches in height to prevent visually impaired persons from walking into tables, chairs on sidewalk locations.
Thank you.
Great. Next. I heard revising the guidelines, section one point E to clarify, electrical cables and extension cords shall not constitute a tripping hazard.
Yes.
And I will assume consensus of the commission unless a commissioner speaks up in opposition to one of these points. Section three of the guidelines revised to clarify a requirement to maintain a four foot sidewalk clearance.
I see no opposition. Commissioner Wright, actually, has his hands.
I want to back up to the extension cord piece. Could you go over that one more time for me, please?
So it would be revising guidelines, section one point E on packet page three eighty six. To also clarify that electrical cables and extension cords shall not constitute a tripping hazard. I think Chair Berman's concern was that while it's implied, it's not explicit that they shouldn't be laid across the sidewalk in such a manner as to create a tripping hazard.
Yes, exactly.
And they do have things you can put them in that wheelchairs can bounce over. There's all kinds of ways to deal with that.
So Ms. O'Connor, can you clarify if you looked further into this? My recollection was that permanent electrical installations was the only authorized way to achieve an electrical connection other than with a battery power generator, but do you have more insight into that issue?
I don't know if I can list off all of the potential methods that could be used, but maybe a solar powered battery or, you know, charged of for an electrical source or just as long as they're not obtaining power from city connections or using a connection that would cross the public right of way. Those those scenarios are what are prohibited.
Commissioner Domarat?
Does that include an overhead wire or a structure that can be built from the restaurant or facility overhead and then to the parklet?
That does include that scenario, yes.
For the record, the kind of widely used I guess they're usually rubber or plastic cording casers that I have seen like on construction sites or for temporary power service. I don't have as much of a concern with those. It's more like when cords are just duct taped to the ground and they're kind of kicked loose. I definitely stumbled on some, you know, in the past. So that's kind of where my basis for the comment comes from.
Understood, and so it sounds like as drafted, shall not constitute a tripping hazard, may allow some discretion for approved and ADA compliant methods of laying an extension cord across the sidewalk in a manner that would be consistent with that guideline.
I believe so. Anyone opposed? No, no opposition there.
All right, thank you. So then we were on to guidelines, section three, revising to clarify the requirement to maintain a four foot sidewalk clearance. Chair Berman, I think your concern was that it's stated in the ordinance, but most permittees may just jump to the guidelines, and so it's important enough to to put it into the guidelines as well.
Yes. I see no hands waving in opposition.
So then next guidelines, section four, revised to clarify that the permitted locations must remain outside necessary emergency vehicle access lanes.
Yes.
And then the next item was to ensure parklets are properly lit to ensure safety.
Yes.
And then revise the noise standards to allow amplified sound, provided it is not perceptible beyond one hundred seventy five feet from the permitted location. I think we need to clarify amplified and non-amplified. I don't think non-amplified sound is allowed to go beyond one hundred seventy five feet, but I think all sources of sound.
All sources of sound, yes.
Right. And then revise the hours for allowing amplified and non-amplified sound to twelve P M to eight P M on Friday, Saturday and Sunday and federal holidays and keeping the hours as drafted for Thursday.
Yes. Any opposition from the commissioners? No opposition. Okay.
And just if you would allow a clarification, so with respect to the noise standard, it did come up, I think, primarily in the context of amplified sound. We confirmed a moment ago that non-amplified sound like from an acoustic guitar or non-amplified vocals, I'm sure would fall within that. But is the desire for the commission to impose a standard for like speech or people conversing within the outdoor area to also fall within that, or is it music, or do we need to tailor that sound standard in some some other way?
That's a good question. I'll pass that to the commission for thoughts.
And just one other point to consider is that the the permittee may have the ability to control sources of intentional sound such as music from speakers or from a musician. They may have less of an ability to control the the voices of the people utilizing the space, and they may not necessarily be associated with the business as well.
Sure. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I guess my thought would first to like trombone before, you know, loud voices, especially because we're talking about on the street where you can drive any manner of motorcycle that I can hear from two miles on highway one. I think the standard should be universal, though, and it's not enforceable to people talking because it's the public right of way, so I think it's kind of a non-starter there, but I would be in favor of including it for all manners of sound.
Thank you. Commissioner Godwin?
You might want to include entertainers that are employed by the business if they're giving, say, a comedic act or some sort of rap poetry or something, you may want to include them in the noise limit.
Commissioner Domarat?
I guess the only way to enforce it is you would limit the time or the hours that the parklet can be used, so last seating for a meal would be, let's say, like eight P M or nine P M at that point. So that's the way you control it, that after nine or after ten, you can't use the parklet, nor shouldn't be the public out there. So if if you want to get that specific where you're going to even talk about people talking and trying to have dinner, then you can cut it off, the the use of it at a certain time, and maybe it's a reasonable time of nine P M or ten P M.
Commissioner Leo?
Thank you, Chair. I would agree with Commissioner Ferguson on this one. I think just having a general guidance here or guideline here across all types of sound, therefore there we don't have to get down to whether it was live entertainment or it was a speaker that was attached to the building and just playing light music to the to the ten foot to the group ten foot away, ten feet away from the speaker in the parklet, so or in the outdoor space. So I would just suggest it being universal, and we already have the time restriction to eight P M, so I think we're covered there.
Yeah, and I think I would agree as well with Commissioner Leo and Commissioner Ferguson. I agree with Commissioner Ferguson when he said that given that it's the public right of way, it's it's kind of implied that public conversing noise or roadway noise even can't really be controlled. I think it would be unreasonable to assume that the business owner would have to inherit literally any public noise that comes from around their establishment. So I I think I agree with Commissioner Leo and Commissioner Ferguson. I I appreciate Commissioner Domarat's note about trying to if we really wanted to control the noise from the establishment from all bases to put a limit to the use of the parklet, but I don't think that's necessary at this time. I think just the normal store business hours would be appropriate, but if in the future this does become a nuisance, that could be something we could hold in our back pocket. Commissioner Domarat?
It kind of raised the, again, talking about the the sound, the amplification, the public use. So if a facility or a restaurant closes down at ten P M, is there any responsibility for that permitee or permit holder to kind of secure that area so that you don't get people sleeping on those benches or on those parks and using it, you know, hanging out there till two, three, four in the morning. I mean, if you see what I'm saying, I mean, there's there's a an attractive space for people just walking the streets after the establishment closed to just use it. Is that, you know, have you guys talked about that part?
I think my, I thought about that when I was reviewing the staff report, but I believe there was a section in the language that mentioned that furniture would need to be brought in or kind of restrained at one location. So I interpreted that as the furniture wouldn't be out for people to use in the middle of the night.
Chair Berman, that's correct, and that that language is available on page three eighty six.
Thank you.
And Chair Berman, just to noise more generally, I think the commission seems to be honing in on standards applicable to sources of noise the commission seems to be honing in on standards applicable to sources of noise generated by the permitted activity. I think, you know, other sources of noise that are unrelated to the business, the city will have to use some judgment in the enforcement, right? If it's some unruly party there outside of the hours of of the permitted activity, for instance, you know, is that attributable to the permittee or to the person conducting, you know, the excessive noise? I think that's a judgment called by the enforcing official on the part of the city. And that we will just have to rely on some discretion and the other general laws that also exist to to manage loud noises and unruly behavior.
I agree with that. Thank you. Commissioner Domra, did you have something to add?
No, I was just reading and 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 the the staff information that furniture shall be stored inside. Okay, that's good. Or secure during non-operate. So if you have like, I've seen in some of these parklets where they actually build kind of like a a picnic park bench kind of thing, a bench, a table that would not lend itself well to be carrying inside the, you know, that kind of thing, whether they have to turn them upside down or do something that would then discourage use in off hours. So maybe there's something like that we can tell.
That's a good point, Commissioner Domra. Aside from temporary bird spikes, I'm not sure if if staff has any thoughts.
Has has that seemed to been a problem? We've had these parklets around. Has anybody noticed or have we heard anything about, you know, after hours that, you know, people were using it or hanging out there? Has there been any in Pacifica? Not about other areas, but have we heard anything? Maybe it's a non-issue.
I can say of the recorded complaints about our current outdoor activity permits that were recorded by former staff, that was not an issue that was recorded. So I I don't have any evidence of that occurring.
Chair Berman, to Commissioner Domrat's point on packet page 386, perhaps section 1.0i could be revised to say furniture shall be stored inside or secured to prevent use during non-operation hours of the business sponsor.
I think that's a a simple way to address the concern. Commissioner Domra, does that sound good? I see a thumbs up. Commissioner Wright?
Um, I I just want to make sure that we're comfortable that we've had enough input from law enforcement about it. We're not setting them up to walk the plank. Have we communicated enough with them? Do we have a process in place if they need more support or a rule change? How how do we envision that in the future?
So the police department was provided an opportunity to review the draft ordinance. They had no concerns with the language. And so I I think they would just absorb the patrolling of these units with existing staff and existing operations.
Thank you. Chair Berman, one other point that comes to mind as it relates to noise, just to ensure that the commission considers all these relevant factors is is with respect to the hours of operation. So they are limited to the hours of operation of the permitted business or the business sponsor. And there are no express hours of operation limitations in the city. And so it's conceivable a parklet could be associated with a permitted business that has 24-hour operations, for instance, and that could inadvertently, if you will, have noise impacts into the the wee hours of the night or the morning that that maybe aren't apparent on the face of the ordinance.
Thank you. I guess that could the fact that we were leaning towards a little more general noise restriction could be beneficial then based on the interpreter or the law enforcer. Commissioner Domra.
I guess it it's just common sense that if we, that the music and the noises for the parklet, that gets turned off at 8:00 PM, but that can move inside to the facility where they can continue playing their music or whatever until close of business or is that true? Does it? Does it go without saying that, you know, once it shuts down at 8:00 PM for the outside, that doesn't mean you have to shut it down 8:00 PM for the inside also?
Well, nothing in this ordinance would regulate the operations of
But then I guess vice versa, which Mr. Murdoch was bringing up, is there's no limit to when the parklet can be used because it's attached to the indoor business hours. So given that, yeah.
So in one hypothetical, you have a 24-hour restaurant. And they have diners then, as the ordinance is drafted, using the parklet outdoors, conversing, potentially causing noise. Other generally applicable laws, as mentioned, might apply, but there are no guidelines, you know, to prevent those kinds of issues from occurring and from triggering police response. So for instance, you know, other types of outdoor uses, the commission may say, hey, perhaps they should stop at 10:00 PM, right? Because that might be a cutoff for nighttime noise hours that are where lower noise levels are appropriate for a neighborhood or a business area as compared to daytime use, right? Where amplified music might be acceptable from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM, for instance, on certain days. It may vary, and the commission may want to be more prescriptive in the allowable hours overall for all outside permitted activities.
Commissioner Wright, I saw you go off of mute.
Yeah, I was, I'd be in favor of a hard cap that's compliant with the noise ordinance of the city of Pacifica.
Mr. Murdoch, with that, that sounds like an appropriate correlation. Does that potentially address that concern?
Well, I think that's up to the commission. So the general plan says that the daytime hours are for noise are 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM and nighttime are 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So I don't know if the commission is inclined, for instance, to limit a coffee shop from operating its outdoor activity area, you know, before 7:00 AM, right? Many people like to get coffee very early in the morning. But I think the 10:00 PM one is maybe a little more understandable to me for early mornings or late evening, rather, cutoff.
Commissioner Ferguson? Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. I'll support the 10:00 PM cutoff.
I think we, the commission will need to establish the other end of that. Well, no, the the other end of that, closing at 10 doesn't help if you can open up at 10:01 PM, right, and begin operating again. So 7:00 AM is already established from the general plan and to Commissioner Ferguson's point, maybe it will adversely impact businesses to have that as the morning period. And again, this is to allow businesses to use this streamlined program, if you will. They could, in many instances, still pursue a use permit through the regular process if they wanted to operate outside of those established hours. So it's not as though it couldn't occur. It's just it wouldn't be part of this this program potentially.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I would support 7:00 AM. I think it also could be easily convinced to support an 8:00 AM start time because many of the people I see are not often moving by 8:00 AM. So if you have areas of mixed use, like in Sharp Park, you could have the coffee shop patrons outside of an apartment window, which, you know, noise is noise.
Any other opinions? Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I think we only have a couple of businesses in town that are currently taking advantage of the parklets. I think we're trying really hard to regulate a couple of businesses and maybe a couple of potential others. I think we can do something a little looser and modify it if it's there's great demand for these services, which hasn't appeared in the last two years.
So Commissioner Godwin, in your opinion, would you want to just leave it open-ended and not prescribe operation hours for the parklets at all? Or would you be in line with the city ordinance of just the noise operation? I guess it was.
My first preference would be to just leave it open and not have it. My second preference would be to use the existing daytime nighttime hours in the plan because I think we're putting a lot of effort into something that's for just a couple of businesses. And I think that's plenty for right now, which if it turns out that this becomes a problem, we can modify it later. It's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from the commission?
So Chair Berman, I'm hearing an overall hours of operation limitation of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM for all permitted activity types.
I believe, I guess, Commissioner Ferguson, it sounded like you agreed with that approach. I agree with that approach. And Commissioner Domra, oh, Commissioner Wright, did you say something?
I'm in favor.
Okay. And Commissioner Domra. I see a thumbs up. Okay. Yes, I think we reached a majority consensus.
Thank you, Chair Berman, for letting me walk through those individual points to confer.
No, that's that's so helpful. Thank you. Sorry, I should take better notes. Well, now that staff received clarification on our direction, is anyone willing to make a motion? Commissioner Ferguson?
Oh, I had a question on making a motion before I, I guess I could be open to doing it. How would we reference the corrections made? You were just saying the conditions as discussed and agreed in the minutes or in the in the meeting?
So you would make the the recommended motion in the staff report and say with additional modifications as read by staff?
While we wait for a motion, I I actually forgot to pay a compliment to staff. I was really happy to see the survey from the business owners. I thought that was a really great outreach that city staff did. So thank you, Mr. Murdoch and Ms. O'Connor for leading that.
Thank you, Chair.
I guess, Mr. Connor or Christian, could you direct me towards the page that has a recommended motion on it?
Sure, it's the last page of the staff report, which is on packet page.
286.
Thank you.
Are there any objections? I can make a motion now?
Yes.
Okay, I move that the planning commission finds proposed ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act adopts the resolution included as the attachment A to the staff report to initiate text amendment TA 122-22 and recommends approval to the city council and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference with additional modifications as read by staff.
Thank you for that motion. Commissioner Wright?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domra?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Leo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. That's a really exciting progression for the city. Thank you. Communication items, commission communications. Are there any commission communications? I have one. I I just want to thank Vice Chair Hauser for serving as liaison to city councils' adoption of the Sharp Park specific plan. I I was not able to attend that meeting, but I know she probably did a really stellar job. And so thank you to her for her time. Staff communications.
Thank you, Chair. Continuing on with the point you made in commission communications, Vice Chair Hauser served as the planning commission's liaison to a special meeting of the city council on August 31, where they considered the Sharp Park specific plan and incorporated, you know, the vast majority of the planning commission's recommendations, made a few changes of the council's own and ultimately adopted the specific plan. So the council is grateful for the planning commission's hard work over five substantive public hearings to really shape the plan in the way that the commission did. I'm also grateful to the commission's work. It was really well thought out and you know, I'm sure the community appreciates that as well. The next step for that is for the staff to package up the Sharp Park specific plan as a local coastal program amendment and ship that off to the coastal commission. That's its own undertaking, which is very staff intensive, which relates to the next communication I have, which is the city's local coastal land use plan, which the city council approved in February of 2020. The coastal commission accepted that application as filed finally on August 12th, so two and a half years after the the city council approved it. So it could be some time before we see the Sharp Park specific plan, you know, come before the coastal commission for consideration, but it's all part of a process. Sometimes those processes are lengthy, but we will be doing our best within our our means and resources to advance the specific plan and the LCLUP as well.
Thank you, Christian, and also thank you, Bonnie and Deepa, for all your hard work. It's been a long process, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that brings us to adjournment. So before we adjourn, I'm just going to read this item. Anyone aggrieved by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Leo?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson? Motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domra?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Leo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Bye.
Good night.